I think we're all, all good to start our meeting. I think they call the meeting to order. I'm gonna forego the pledge allegiance.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's alright. Roll call, please.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here. Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
Here.
Sandy Kufel.
She's apt to excuse. She had called me today. Alright, first thing on our agenda is a public hearing for soil removal permits. We have both silent acres and blue water materials before us. I will entertain a motion to open up the public hearing for social or for so- social distancing or for our soil removal permits.
Make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we open up the public hearing for the soil removal permits for silent acres and blue water materials.
I'll support that.
At 7:04?
Uh, 7:04. We have a motion in support for opening up the public hearing for soil removal permits. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying yeah, aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, at this time, it's still 7:04. My computer, I'll open up public hearings for soil removal permits for silent acres or blue water materials. Do we have anybody that would like to address us at this time? Anybody, anybody? I don't see anybody. I will entertain a motion to close our public hearing for soil removal permits.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for soil removal permits for silent acres and blue water horseshoes at 7:05.
I'll support it.
Okay, a motion of support, close the public hearing, 7:05. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Alright, next is our supervisor's report. And how usually they, they get changed a lot every time I write it. And the time of the meeting. I'll start off, as I always do with high water. Our current level of the water has actually popped up since, about an inch since I wrote this. We're probably at right at 578. And it has been falling a little bit. Actually, it's fallen a couple inches from the the big rain and winds we had a couple weeks ago. And the forecast, they're staying, they're staying consistent from the Army Corps of Engineer. They're claiming it's gonna peak the first week of June and start going down. And they're, they're still saying we're three inches lower at June 20th. They'll be down three inches lower. And it boggles my mind because of all the water we had and everything up in Midland and stuff. But in the whole grand, grand scheme of things, it's not a whole lot of water. And I got a big footnote here. I just received today at 3:30, we're having a wind advisory. Actually, really, starting late tonight or tomorrow morning, Tuesday morning. They're saying 10 to 15 knots out of the west Tuesday, Wednesday. 10 to 15 knots out of the southwest with thunderstorms. And they're saying it could fluctuate our water higher, you know, several inches between now and then. And as we all know, you know, we, we're always susceptible to a rain or wind event anomaly where we've seen it go up eight inches before. So hopefully, that's not the case. In fact, then they said Thursday, the wind's gonna keep on blowing 10 to 15 but clock around out of the east. So that does hurt a few people in our area, but it's not as bad as the southwest winds. So I wanted to let everybody know that, right off the get-go is we could, we could have some weather in the next couple days. And actually, we got this, the National Weather, NOAA put this out like a day and a half before they normally do for bad weather. So that's what kinda has me concerned about this one. Is they, they were really, really on the bandwagon. I just muted everybody, sorry. Really on the bandwagon to get this out soon. So I'm not sure if they're gun shy or what the deal is. But I, I put it out on social media. And as, as I mentioned before, you know, we're working on enforcement on the, on the rivers for wakes. And I actually was just, as I was typing this Thursday, the sheriff did put a replacement for the commanding officer in charge of the Marine Patrol. And, and they have been out on the water. So I'm glad we got someone in control. I haven't met them yet. I know my coach knows them. And we're supposed to set up a meeting here this week. And I will present them with that the resolution we passed, pretty much demanding strict enforcement of the, of the wake laws on our waters. And also pleased to tell the board that the DDA did approve up to $25,000 to pay for wake enforcement for the Clay Township Police Patrol on the water. And that, that's gonna be a great benefit to us and, and get our, our people out there and, and, you know, help protecting the properties of the, of the boaters. Mike, in a little bit, I'm gonna, I don't wanna pull you blindside. I wanna recognize you if you wanna talk a little bit about, I mean, a couple of people asked us of being prepared for readiness for, for the stuff that's happening around the country. So in a little bit, I'm gonna recognize you for that, if you wanna make a quick statement on that. At the end, at the end of my report. I know the, two weeks ago, we were out and they, they wrote several tickets and actually responded to a boating accident. So it's good to have them out there. And everyone's telling me, well, I didn't see them in front of my house. You know, we, we have 140 miles of shoreline in the whole township in one boat. Likewise, if you relate that to on land patrol, I think we have about 45 miles of roads in a township. And we have two to three cars. So it's, it's a challenge for, for, you know, our one boat and plus some marine boat. We could, we could have three or four boats out. But we're trying the best that we can. Also on, alright, we are selling sandbags. We do have unfilled sandbags available for $18,000, and the filled sandbags for 50 cents a piece. All those supplies are starting to get limited. We are gonna attempt to, to fill some more. But they've been going pretty good. And obviously, we've, we got the water and there's a need. Been asked about water diverting tubes that we sold last year. Township isn't selling them this year. But if anyone wants them, they can buy them direct themselves. And the name of the company is Airee, A-I-R-E Industries. You Google them, pops right up. And they, they have a promo going on. If you use the promo code when you check out, U-B-E-S-A-L-E, E-U-B-E-S-A-L-E 10, you get a discount on your order. So I've been getting a lot of questions on that. Moving on right along to our COVID-19 report. As I was typing this, we had two active cases in the township. We were down to zero. But we have two on the township. We might have three now. Do, do we have three, Mike? Yeah, no? I'm not sure where we're at. Three, four, four. We have four active cases now. The DDA started a COVID-19 grant for businesses. If you have a business within the district, the DDA will refund any expenses up to $3,000 for making, you had to spend to make your business safe, to open. And they, or anything we had to do to keep the customers and your employees safe from COVID-19. And like I say, well, we're going retro, back to February 1 for this. And we decided we're gonna keep it open, maybe towards the end of August, see how the response is. And the DDA will look at it then if, if we need to throw more money at it, or if we close it down, or whatever. I've probably gotten, sent out at least 10, 15 applications. I've gotten three back. And like, like Anthony's, I'm glad they're gonna reopen. They, they send up, you know, giving partitions, sneeze partitions and partitions on the booths and, and everything else. And one more thing that we're doing on that, instead of these individual companies buying hand sanitizers and masks and things, we, we thought that we would have a better purchasing power and get a better deal if the township would buy it, the DDA would buy it, and we just give it to them instead of reimbursing them all. And we put an order in, and as soon as we get some of those supplies, I'll, I'll go around or somebody go around and give the businesses, here's some hand sanitizer, here's some masks for you to use to keep your customers and yourself safe. And hopefully, we'll, we'll get it down to zero again soon. Donations are still going well for the Elginac Food Pantry and making the deliveries. And we are doing a food giveaway. The third one is going to be June 6 at the Elginac Lions Hall again. And like I say, that's been all, that's been totally funded through donations. Last time we did this, we actually boxed up 170 boxes. About 110 cars we serviced, but then we had a lot of home deliveries we made. It's actually a great program. Again, is I'm overwhelmed of the generosity of our, our community when it comes to this. It's like, you know, Artie, how much you need type thing, write a check out. And it's just, it's truly amazing and we are blessed. We have a lot of people that wanna help others, other people that are going through this. It's a hard time. I just found out about noon and I accepted. I've been appointed to the St. Clair County Recovery and Reopening Task Force for COVID-19. And we are having our first meeting on Thursday. And I, at times I get a little vocal because I have a lot of people reaching out to me that, that are going through hard times because of employment issues, money issues, not being able to get this or that. And for instance, I sent an email out to the St. Clair County Health Department and LLC and a few others. If, well, now we do know. But if we reopen and like the restaurants, they can go to our 50% capacity. I want to, so like our health department would temporarily allow outside seating for some of these places. Put up a little fence or a tent or something. And that will, number one, increase the capacity so they can service more people. And number two, it's just safer to be outside. Things like that. And trying to be proactive as, as much as we can. And I'll still be, be along those, thinking along those lines. But unless anyone's heard, we're living in a different COVID world than we were just a few hours ago. The governor just issued some, some executive orders. Effective immediately, you can have gatherings of 100, up to 100 people. Our playgrounds will be opened effective immediately. I'm, tomorrow morning, I'm gonna go over on ours. As long as you gotta practice social distancing. I was gonna measure the distance between the swings. If they're less than six feet, I'll close every other swing down. If not, you know, we'll have Adam. We gotta get some social distancing signs over there. June 8, restaurants can open, 50% capacity. Libraries and museums will, can open. There's a lot, a lot of stuff going on as far as that. Our splash pad will be able to open as of June 8. In fact, I talked to John DeBoyer about that. I said, let's get that rocking and rolling. Before we can open though, we, we have to have the health department take water samples and have the health department bless it. And I told him today, he's gonna be a busy man the next week. So let's get on the list like today or tomorrow morning, if we can get ours blessed either Friday or Monday morning or Thursday. And get that going. So it's funny because I, I, just last week, I was told that, you know, that splash pad may not open for the rest of the year. That was Thursday. That's what they told me. But today, it's a different world. It's open in a week. Music in the park. We were told we could not have it. And we are talking with the county and, and Elginac and our Parks Division about moving forward with it. And painting lines in the, in the grass for social distancing. And I'm hoping to have a meeting tomorrow morning with Elginac, cause it is in Elginac. And the band's good to go still. We probably won't be able to get the county stage, so we're, we're gonna put them on a lumberjack truck. We're gonna use that for a stage, if, if that's the case. So I, I'm not making it official yet, but unofficially, it's gonna be a go for this Thursday. Hopefully, after tomorrow around noon, we'll be able to make it official about music in the park. We opened up our township offices today. Normal hours except we're, we're closed for lunch between 12 and 1. And what we're doing, we're, we're closing it down so we can sanitize the lobby, just to keep it safe for everybody. And we're asking them to limit it to four people at a time. And, but you know, for people that wanna come in. But we also encourage people to still utilize our Dropbox and, and do things online if, if they can. We don't mind seeing smiling faces in our office. But if some people, you know, this whole thing, it depends if you're high risk or not. If you're high risk, I would stay home. But, so like I say, if you are high risk, you know, we'll, we'll still take care of all your needs. Calls, we'll meet you out in the parking lot or do whatever you need to do. I guess it's up to everyone's decision of what your comfort level is. We did receive our audit from the water plant. We get an audit every time, every, every year in this time. Basically, we, we kinda estimate what the costs are for our water plant. And, and we pay those monthly. Then, then we, we do, or we do the audit. And we do a lookback charge, it's called. And our lookback charge, we actually got a $61,000 credit for our water. Because we paid just a little bit more than we thought the, the cost is gonna be. And so that's a good thing. So our, the cost of operating our water plant was $61,000 less than what we anticipated it'd be. So what we'll be paying going forward for water for the next year will be much lower than what we anticipated to. Been working on the beach park property with the county. We have a tentative closing date of June 15 right now. And our cleanup weekend for the township is June 27 on mainland, behind the water apartment. Harson's Island be at Brown's Field is June 27 and June 28. That's always a popular thing. And been also working on our, our saw grant. We, we received a grant for $1.1 million for doing a lot of work and inspections on our sewers. They've been cleaning all the sewers out. I think they've been down Sassy and Riverside. They're gonna be hitting Collie soon. And then the Bird Lanes, Flamingo this week. So if you see a truck, we're going through that and cammering it. We already found a couple things like a, there is a, on Joe Char, there was a, an old service going to a vacant lot and was capped. Well, the cap came off and it's leaking water infiltration in our system. So we found that, we capped it. And a lot of these fixes, we're fixing them right away when we find them. So. And then we've been busy getting insurance quotes on our liability insurance. I know they've been bugging Cindy a lot and myself with all kinds of questions and the other department heads. Hoping to have that wrapped up here pretty soon. And all kinds of good stuff going on. Oh, I did get, I'll post this later somewhere on the island. I got a text that's 25 minutes before our meeting. The garbage pickup on Harson's Island, what, they weren't be able to pick everyone up because there was a low line, power line where they couldn't get through. So they're gonna play catch-up tomorrow and pick up what they didn't hit today. And working on the whole budget process. And about 17 budgets. I actually, I just emailed some of the board out today. Four or five of the budgets, maybe six, I'm not sure, for you to review. And if you have any questions, you can contact me or, and/or the department heads. And the rest will be following tonight or tomorrow. Just so you can go through them and, and get yourself familiar with them. And if you have any questions, and hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll get that through. It's not as ugly as I thought it was gonna be initially. So it is what it is. And we're gonna have to probably do some amendances, existing budget, I think. Right, Chrissy? Shake your head. We'll have that for our next meeting also. Let's see. We did put up the banners for the graduating seniors along M29 to acknowledge them. They didn't get a proper send-off. And the DDA paid for that. And they look pretty good. A lot of good-looking kids in the, in the town that are graduating. So. Other than that, I think, you know, we have a bunch of parks and rec programs that were canceled or delayed, suspended. And I'm sure Cindy's gonna embarrass. She'll be busy the next couple of weeks, seeing what we can do and can't do with our, our new, new world as of today. So that's all I have right now. I'm gonna unmute everybody. And hey, Mike, you wanna say a, a few words about just all the stuff that's going on and how we're prepared for it as a township?
Well, as far as we go, I mean, we're taking everything day by day and we're just keeping an eye on everything. You know, pretty much on a daily basis, I'm talking with the rest of the chiefs and department heads throughout the county and keeping each other updated on what's going on in each of our communities. So a lot of times what's happening in one, you can see kinda try to bleed over to the next. But so far, so good. Everything's looking good. You know, we just, like anything else, somebody, anybody's seen anything suspicious. We wanna know about it. Let's face it, the, the people that are doing what's going on right now, they're not protesters. I mean, they're out there for one reason and one reason only, and that's to cause havoc. You know, our officers all know, you know, and are vigilant as far as to what's going on throughout the country. And like any other department, I mean, we're just gonna be on our guard, you know, doing everything first and foremost to keep our citizens safe. So I think, I think we'll fare well. We got a good community here and a tight-knit community. And I think everybody works well together. And our community's not afraid to reach out to us. So.
Right. Okay. And I know one thing too, that's, and it'll be, we'll be talking about as a board going forward is, is our, the, we're looking at redoing all our policies and procedures for, for your department as far as.
Yeah, I can talk about that quick if you want.
Yeah.
This has been something that I've been, been looking at for a couple years now. And like anything else in policies and procedures, especially the business that we're in, you know, there, what, something that was good last year is pretty much out of date this year with the ever-growing digital age as well as social media and everything that goes with it. It's a constant battle trying to keep up with different policies. With that being said, I've reached out and I've been talking with a company which is called LexiPol. And they specialize in policy and procedures for public safety throughout the nation. I mean, there, it's countless how many agencies that use LexiPol. Highly recommended. I have not seen anything bad about them. And basically, they've got nothing but a, a huge staff of attorneys that work on nothing but policy and procedures for public safety. And really, at the end of the day, for what we're looking in order to, to get this shored up and get all of our policies and procedures completely revamped, we couldn't do it ourselves and hire our attorney even close to what they'll charge us to do this. And at the end of the day, let's look at it. I mean, they're the experts. They deal with this every day. And not to mention, along with this, if one's new policies in that do come out, they immediately forward them to us. Each of our officers are notified by email. With that, they have to go in, read the policies, take a test on it. That is all recorded and documented. So, which is even nicer, cause you got a just a perfect paper trail as far as the training with everyone.
Does that help also our fire department too? You said public safety.
Yes. Me and George have been working on this together. I know George is looking at the same thing as well. They offer the same thing for the fire. Me and George both sat down with a web conference with them. And the, the program just looks fantastic. Everything that they have to offer us, right down the lines from the policy and procedures, along with the training that comes with it, that's at our fingertips as well.
Okay, great. Thanks. So anybody have any questions for my report or Mike or anything? This time?
Because we're in a budget process right now, I would assume that this should be fairly simplistic to get this involved in the police and/or fire budget for next year?
Yeah. I, I, we, we already have it tentatively in, in the proposed budget for next year.
Sounds like, it sounds like financially, a well-spent layer of protection.
Yeah. And we're actually talking to our, our insurance provider. I know Nickel and staff, they're willing to pay 25%. And we're also gonna be looking at our, asking our work comp insurance provider, see if they'll match that. So we might get half of it paid for. You know, that's, that's what, that's what we're working on now. Anything else right now? Questions? Hearing none. I'm gonna go to Bill's Payable. I will. Yeah?
Mike Mark. He's muted there.
Can't hear you, Mark. Gotta unmute yourself. Okay, try it, try it now. Okay.
Okay, I got it now.
You had a question?
No.
Oh, okay.
If I had, I wouldn't be able to.
Alright.
Continue on.
Alright. Hey, I'll entertain a motion for Bill's payable.
I'll make a motion for, for the Bill's payable at $9,838.
Support.
Yeah, motion of support. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor of the Bill's payable at $9,838, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. And now we have public comments. Do we have any public comments on anything you wanna talk about? Got any public comments, John? Okay. No problem. Hearing no public comments. Moving right along to the consent agenda. Moving right along to the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of May 18th, 2020, check reports and the road watch report from St. Clair County.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion on any of those? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the fire chief report. George?
Good evening. Hello, everybody. Chief's report for May 2020. I've attended two teleconference meetings. One was with the St. Clair Flats Homeowners Association. The other one was with this US Coast Guard. We were planning out Javi Noonar, which is coming up in a couple of weeks. We've been partaking the birthday parades. We've been doing a lot of those, the fire and the police department. And we also participated in the parade for the Elginak High School seniors, 2020 class. So it was a lot of fun. A lot of people showed up. We had all, a lot of our trucks in the parade. We, our emergency calls are starting to pick up. We're about 17 calls down from last year. So they're starting to pick up. I'd like to thank Brian Sears, Brian Cito and Matt Gabriel for a CPR save that they had in the township. So that's kudos to them. Fireboat one and two were in the water. I ordered both of the motors for boat two. And we should receive those in about two weeks. Also, I ordered a flagpole for the island, which I don't have in my report, but we got that on order. So that should be done, installed in a couple of weeks. That's all I got.
Any questions for Chief Rose?
Well, good job out there, chief. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
I'm glad to hear about that flagpole.
And are you watering the plants?
Hey, chief, it's O'Regan.
Yes, sir.
We, do we have any update on the fire trucks?
We're probably going to see those in May or June of next year.
Okay. Are they designed for you?
Everything's ready to go. They're just waiting to put them in production. They're getting them in line, but with COVID-19, everything's been pushed back a couple of months. So we may get them in, in April, but he's saying more May, June timeframe.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Anything else for chief? Thanks a lot, George.
Thank you.
Okay, under new business, first point of order, we have set meeting dates. A resolution to set our meeting dates from July 2020 to June 2021. I will entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to support the Resolution 2020 of setting the township meeting dates. All of us got a copy. First meeting was slated for Monday, July 6th, 2020. The last one slated for Monday, June 21st, tentatively in Harson's Island.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and all kinds of support. Either Joanne or Chrissy got that one for the support, I think. Any discussion? I see we do have one Tuesday, I think because September 8th for, because Labor, Labor Day is that Monday, so. And all the rest of them look pretty normal. All right, any more, any discussion on this? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Valentine, yes. Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
So Reagan?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Next, we have the soil removal permit for silent acres. You can see in your packet, our billion zoning, or yeah, our building official went through the checklist and, and did an inspection and you know, they, they have a performance bond and then everything else that's, that's required. Does anybody have any questions or would someone like to make a motion to approve the soil removal permit for silent acres?
Make a motion to approve the soil removal permit for silent acres firms?
I'll support that.
Okay, we have motion and support. Anyone have any discussion or, or comments on it? See, they have the surety bond posted. Like I say, it's a yearly thing.
That's a pillar in our community.
Yeah.
Parades above board. I'd be happy to support that.
Okay. All right. I hear any more discussion? So all in favor of the soil removal permit for silent acres, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have soil removal permit for blue water materials. And the same thing, Gary, our zoning, billion zoning official did an inspection on it and made sure they have the, the bond, the performance bond, surety bond, bond in place and proper insurance and went right down the whole checklist, so. I'll entertain a motion or if anyone wants to, to have a discussion or a question about it.
I'll also make a motion to approve the soil removal permit for blue water materials.
I'll support that.
We did. Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion on that?
If I could, I see that Gary Burrow had noted on the application about some debris. Are we at Clay Township Fire Department issuing any burn permits yet, chief?
We are issuing burn permits, but I don't believe we have one issued for him.
Gotcha. Just wonder if we're issuing. Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? We, we have motion, yeah, we have motion and support, don't we?
Yes.
All right. All in favor of the soil removal permit for blue water material, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have board member comments. Cindy Valentine, do you have any comments?
Just that it is election time, so if you have an absentee ballot request, be sure to sign it and get it in. And I do want to ensure any voter that does not want to vote absentee, we will have polls open on election day. Absolutely.
Good. All right. Hey, Mark?
Hey. Okay, planning commission, we approved the amendments to the boathouse ordinance. And we also approved the amendments to the shipping containers as accessory buildings. And the master plan, we also reviewed. New updates in that, that we'll be rolling that out relatively soon. And that's it. Thank you.
That sounds good. So those, those ordinance amendments will have to go up to the county first and then it will be before us.
Right.
All right, Sandy's not here. Joanne, do you have anything for us?
We had a ZBA meeting and it was our first one with a Zoom and it was a little confusing to start out, but we managed to get everything accomplished that we, you know, that came before us.
Good.
Everything, so that was one thing. And then the other thing I'd like to say is, I'll be so glad when we can get back into the township hall and see each other, physically see each other and get, kind of get back to normal. And for all of us to gradually, hopefully resume normal operations. And, you know, best of, thank everybody for all the hard work you're doing to weather this storm we're in.
Sounds good. Chris?
Artie, just real quick, two things. One, I'd like to pray for the family of Gary Floyd. And I'd like to pray for peace and compassion, not only here, but also across our nation. Secondly, I would like to thank the Clay Township Police Department, the Clay Township Fire Department, the Elginak Fire Department, St. Clair County Police Department, the DDA, scoreboard and more, and all the people that helped make the seniors' graduation parade such a special event.
Yep.
It was absolutely spectacular. I think all of the kids really enjoyed it. And in day and age where these four seniors have gotten a lot taken away from them, this is a really good opportunity to give back. And I just thank everybody that was involved because it was a heartfelt thank you. It was a special moment for them that they will never forget.
Great.
Thank you for sharing that with us, Chris.
Chrissy?
I just wanna let everyone know that now that the office is open, they can, they don't need an appointment to pay for sandbags unless they don't feel comfortable coming in and they want me to come out to the parking lot. So we're open. You can come in, pay for your sandbags and schedule an appointment for pickup.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I, I want, I, I'm glad we're starting to get things semi-back to normal and opening up again and respond what Chris said too. You know, I've been praying a lot too for, for the, the people that were injured in Minneapolis and, and even the, you know, I'm, I'm all about peaceful protesting. I mean, that's what made America, but when you get these rebel rousers and it turns violent, it, it does the opposite with, with, what's needed to be done. And, you know, like Chris said, we, we really need time for healing as a country for this. And I've been doing a lot of praying for our whole country to do some, some good healing. And hopefully it, it will happen. So that and the breathe. Everyone's gotta breathe. We, we've been going through a tough three months, really. And it's, it's a shame to screw it up when we're, we're almost there. You know, we're, we're all, we almost got that mountain climb. Let's not slip off it right now. So, and I, I just wanna thank all our first responders and it's tough out there. It's, it's tough and you gotta make quick decisions and it, it's hard, so. But we will get through it. Not time to just survive, but it's time to thrive, so. Other than that, our, our next meeting's gonna be June 15th, in person, six feet away, but in person. All right.
All right.
That's right. That'll be fun. And heck, I think we can even go out afterwards if we wish, right?
Yeah.
Mike? Or John's house?
Yeah, or, or John's house. Maybe, maybe we'll go to John's house after the meeting. Six feet apart. Okay, other than that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Board, I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Okay. All in favor, ayes.
Aye.
All right, thanks for coming, everybody. And next time, we're gonna do it in person.
Good night, everybody.
If anybody needs anything, let me know. We'll see you. And thanks for, thanks for everything.
Thanks for tuning in, John.